And good evening and welcome to the September 25th meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're glad to have those of you that are in attendance with us, and we're glad to have those that are perhaps watching on television at home. At this time, I'm going to ask you to please stand as we have two young ladies, Ella Good, a fifth grade student from Bradley, and Leila Hearn, a fourth grade student from Case and Lane, to lead us in our pledge, followed then by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now a moment of silence. All right, board members, you have seen the agenda. I would like to have a motion, if we could, please, to approve the agenda as written.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Communications? Let's call on Councilman Bill Shacklet.
We all know how much you enjoy recognition, but you know, recognizing you helps us remember how special you are and what you mean to our community. We've had an opportunity to know you for a long time, and we've had a dear friendship for a long time. And I had a picture that I ran across that I wanted to share with those as I read this proclamation. If...
Lisa, could you kind of show this picture?
Well, I'll be paying you money for this.
You could pay me money, not just show it.
She's been special for a long time, and I remember back in our high school days.
Oh, man.
We all realized how talented you were, but that was also recognized by your senior class when she was a superlative and the most talented there. She was an officer in our band, a leader in our school as a young woman, and now a leader in our community.
There are people that will pay you.
Yes. Well, there's a fellow I want to recognize, too. You say that, you've talked earlier about your husband, and I want to recognize Steve Gilbert, who's behind, you know, they say behind every great woman. I think Rita would like to say that.
Yeah, he does, as a matter of fact.
Oh, sure. Well, there's Steve Gilbert, and Steve, certainly, thank you for all you've done.
Steve noted that, first of all, people that I work with call him the saint.
Wow.
And then he noticed that he got more applause outside than I did.
Well, it's an amazing thing. Well, on behalf of the mayor, I want to read a proclamation that, to make this day even more special for you. Whereas the Tennessee Organization of School Superintendents met in Gatlinburg on September the 9th for the annual awards banquet, the 2019 Tennessee Superintendent of the Year was announced at the banquet on Sunday night. Dr. Gilbert was selected for this honor out of a distinguished group of eight regional superintendents of the year from across Tennessee. And whereas Dr. Gilbert earned her BS in music and elementary education, her MAT in music and education in administration and supervision from Middle Tennessee State University, followed by her doctorate in curriculum and instruction from the Tennessee State University. And whereas Dr. Gilbert has served as director of schools in Murfreesboro since 2010, under her leadership, the school system has seen drastic improvements, going from school improvement to status to a state-identified exemplary school district. And whereas the Tennessee Organization of School Superintendents announced Dr. Linda Gilbert as the 2019 Tennessee Superintendent of the Year, representing the Mid Cumberland region of Tennessee, now therefore I, Shane McFarland, Mayor of the City of Murfreesboro, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim September 25th, 2018, as the day to honor Dr. Linda Gilbert, and urge all citizens to join in this special honor. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dan. I will just briefly say that what I know is that nobody does this job by themselves, and so I'm blessed to have the staff in Murfreesboro City Schools that we have, the teachers, the support staff, the administrators, and thank you, board, and thank you, council, for your support as always there. Appreciate this very much.
I think we would probably be remiss if we didn't also recognize that some things cycles in your life go every 20 years. Because 20 years ago, in 1998, you were selected as the Tennessee Teacher of the Year, if I'm not mistaken. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
Well, congratulations again on that.
Thank you.
We don't know what you're going to do after 20 more, but we hope we're all around to find out.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Right now, I'd recognize Mr. Jimmy Garland, TSBA Mid Cumberland District Director, to make a presentation. Mr. Garland?
Thank you, Mr. Campbell, the board chair. And Dr. Gilbert, we are pleased to be here today to actually be able to present this award to your school district. Wishing to spotlight outstanding board performance, the TSBA School Board Association created its Board of Distinction program to recognize the highest standards of performance by a board as a whole. This award, one of TSBA's most prestigious, celebrates the achievement of those boards that have met the challenge of leadership in every area of their board's responsibility. To be designated a Board of Distinction, a board must meet specific requirements in four key areas: planning, policy, promotion, and board development. These areas include such elements as creating five-year plans, reviewing and maintaining their policy manuals, participating in TSBA district and state meetings, conducting a self-evaluation and achieving and maintaining necessary boardmanship level for each member. As the requirements are extensive, not every board qualifies as a Board of Distinction. Your board is among those select few. On behalf of the Tennessee School Board Association, I am proud to present the Board of Distinction Award through the Murfreesboro Board of Education. Congratulations to each of you and to the board as a whole. I'd like to present this to Chair Campbell at this time.
I do want to recognize that this award goes to the previous board of members were: myself, Vice Chair Nancy Van Neer, who is here with us tonight, also Wes Ballard, who is still currently on the board, Jared Barrett, who could not be here tonight because he moved, but I did get a message from Jared this afternoon congratulating all those on the board, Phil King, who is with us tonight, David Settles, who is still on our board, and Cogger Smith, who is also. Now, if you three would please stand, along with Wes and David. This was a challenge that I made to that board back, well, in October, I guess. So now my next challenge is going to be for the next board. This certificate is good for two years, but it'll take some work for the upcoming, or the board in 2020, I guess, to make sure that they continue to receive the Board of Distinction. Thank you, David, very much for being here with us. Jimmy? All right, Ms. Trejo, you may continue.
Okay, thank you. We're going to start out by congratulating our farm-to-school program at Discovery School and Seagull for winning second and third place in the school garden vegetable competition for peppers at the Tennessee State Fair. So this is the first time that we've entered, and we have come out with two wins. We want to give a big shout out to our farmer educator for helping us along that way. Also, Dr. Heather Knox was recognized by the Tennessee Department of Education and the Tennessee Organization of School Superintendents at the Teacher of the Year banquet last week as the Tennessee State winner for the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. This award is the nation's highest honor for K through 12 mathematics and science teachers. It's presented by the National Science Foundation on behalf of the White House Office of Science and Technology Policy. So that is your communication, sir.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. All right, consent items. We have four policies under the consent items, and I've got, have a question on, I guess, one of them, and we have already discussed that, but I would like for, for Elizabeth to explain. The one, policy 1.102, where it states in replacing a board member that has left, do you want to explain what the difference is in those situations so we'll all be under the same board or knowledge of what goes on?
Yes, Chairman. At the last board meeting, there was a question raised that due to the increase in the population of Smyrna, the fulfilling of a vacancy on the school board would fall under a different law that governs school boards for municipality. And based on that, additional changes were made to the policy. The prior policy said that if there was a vacancy, then it would be filled by an interim appointment of the local governing body at the next general election. However, the new law that governs the board, based on the change of population, says that it would be at the next primary, general election, or referendum in the city. So those, the changes based on that law and the increase in the population are what's reflected in this policy.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions on that?
So, David?
Yes. So whereas before, because at the time we were a smaller community, the board could appoint an interim person, but now we have to wait till an election, and that could be a long, a lengthy amount of time where we are short a school board member. Is that what I understand?
No, there can still be an appointment made by the council, but it's just clarifies now that it's an interim appointment, and that it'll be filled at the next election, whether it be primary, general, or referendum, whereas before it was just general election.
I see.
David?
Mr. Chairman, you said Smyrna, but you didn't mean Murfreesboro.
Murfreesboro, I'm sorry.
Just want to be sure, I don't want anybody to think...
I live in Smyrna, I'm sorry.
Well, you can move here if you want to. Glad to have you.
I did see an article today that Murfreesboro is the it city.
It is.
We've known that.
19.
We are the Board of Distinction, and we have the Director of the Year.
What more can we add?
Not much.
All right, after all that discussion, do I have a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. LaRoche. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Action items?
Your first action item, and we're continuing with the board policies, the first action item is to delete BO 13. This is Board Staff Communications. Basically, there doesn't seem to be a need for this. In fact, TSBA recommended that we delete it. If we do feel that there is a need, then we can certainly put it in an administrative directive, but that is BO 13.
Any questions? Have a motion to approve the deletion of board policy BO 13?
Moved to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Your second board policy is BO 22, again recommending deletion. Actually, 1.601 has exactly the same verbiage, so there is no need for this particular policy.
Have a motion to approve the deletion of board policy BO 22?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. We have a second?
Second.
Is it Ms. Goff?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Your third board policy is STU 56. As you know, a lot of times when the legislature or the federal governing body makes laws, sometimes those laws are applicable to a particular time and not to a later date. We can find no reason to have STU 56. It does deal with collecting data. We obviously do collect data, but as far as this particular policy, it is no longer applicable to what education is doing right now.
Any questions? Mr. Settles?
I have a question. So it's not that we won't be collecting data, per se, but this policy is no longer required because we do it in other ways?
Right. If you think, if you, if you just think about 10 ready, all the subgroups, that's data. So obviously, we collect data and do every year, but we can't find a reason for this particular policy.
So the information that we need, we get elsewhere.
That's right.
Other questions? Have a motion?
I'll move.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. LaRoche. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Your next policy is 1.502. This really is a combination of TSB-recommended policies, and we feel that this policy is certainly more current than BO 25 and more appropriate for, for a board policy. When you look at BO 25, it really seems to be more of a strategic plan than it is anything that would be a governing policy. And so the recommendation is to also to, to rescind BO 30, BO 25, and to adopt 1.502.
Any questions? Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Your next policy is 1.6011. This is administration and absence of policy. It is the exact verbiage of BO 23, so you are rescinding BO 23 and adopting 1.6011.
Mr. Settles?
I have a question. When we do these, and I could be wrong, is it really to line up more succinctly? Because I know, would this mean the exact policy? We're just renumbering, is that correct?
It's the renumbering. That's exactly right.
And that lines up more with TSBA's kind of...
Yes, uh-huh.
I know we don't use Dewey Decimal System anymore, but that's what I learned.
That's exactly right.
So it's kind of like, we're not doing Dewey Decimal anymore.
It's just interesting.
All right. I'm with it.
You'll have 1 through 6 now, instead of STU and PER and BO and whatever else. P, I've forgotten, STU and one more.
Got it. Do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. We have a second?
Second.
Ms. Goff?
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Your next policy is your parent and family involvement, and this would rescind IS 6 and BO 27. This is 4.502. This, this policy really brings those two policies up to date, and when you look at the other two policies, they really get into a lot of specifics that probably either need to go into, well, probably could go into an AD, but particularly with IS 6, it's referencing ESEA, which is the old Elementary and Secondary Education Act. It recommends the Tennessee, what we used to call TICCEP, that now is a yearly plan. So it really brings the verbiage up and takes a lot of the detail out of the policy.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. LaRoche. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
This is another one where we're simply renumbering. Instead of BO 18, it is going to be 5.8021.
Have a motion to change, approve? A motion to approve the change.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I so move that second one.
Are you sure you're saying it right?
I think so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Settles. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Your next policy is board policy 6.4002. This has to do with use of personal information. It is going to rescind STU 49. We've already deleted STU 56, so I do need to make that change. On this one, I highlighted the changes. I think that this is referencing state law that is now current, and there are some interesting changes that were made in state law. This, the state law that came about a few years ago, really, I think when Common Core was coming in and there was concern about what kind of information school districts were gathering, and so I think that's the reason you have the particular verbiage of this law. Particularly, if you look down in number six, you'll find that, and so this one is going to bring us in line with state law.
Does, how does this fit with the request from charter schools for personal information, names of students and such in their solicitation?
It, it, that's a whole different, that's, that's a whole different thing.
It doesn't nullify that, but it...
Right. You'll, you'll have those policies. We have several charter school policies that we'll be bringing to you over the next, next... This, this is more of a concern of, of not collecting information that might have to do with influencing students in inappropriate ways.
Okay, thank you.
That was difficult for me to figure out how to say, by the way. Let me just tell you, yes.
Director, number, number six, the, the part that's being added, is that a lie detector test that they're talking about? Is that, I could read it that way if you were going to try to get the student to submit to something like that. That's how I'm reading it. What other information? Where would they be getting this information if it weren't for a device like that?
I think this was done a couple of years ago when there was real concern about, about school districts collecting information that invaded the student's privacy. And so I think that sometimes in, I think the concern was for research that might be conducted, too. We obviously have never encountered any requests for this kind of information.
Alphonic skin, skin response.
Right, right, right.
Thank you.
Have a motion to approve?
Aye, so moved.
Thank you, Mr. LaRoche. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Your next board policy is 6.4002. Again, this is exactly the same verbiage as BO 36, and so it would replace that policy.
Just changing the numbers.
That's right.
Have a motion to approve the change?
So moved.
Ms. Moore?
Ms. Moore, thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Ms. Barton, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
And your last policy is 6.701, which is student solicitations slash promotional activities. This is going to rescind STU 46 and BO 32. Very similar information, but there's some detailed procedures in here that really need to move into an AD or be eliminated. So that's the reason for, for this particular verbiage.
Ms. Moore?
So is the language already found in another place, or is that something that will have to be developed?
It's, it's very similar. If you, BO 32 refers to solicitations, and then STU 46 refers to student participation in promotional activities. There are some details that, the, actually, the language is very, very similar to it. There are some particular details that, that are not in this particular policy, but the policies are very similar as far as what their purposes are and what they do. Thank you.
Will you define for me, please, school support organizations?
Those are your PTOs. That's the way that they are defined.
Okay, so we're saying then that the PTO sponsors a fundraiser, they do not have to go by this policy?
The, the PTO, and, and I'll let either Mr. Anderson address this, or I'll let Elizabeth address this. Basically, the PTO, a few years ago, if you remember, the PTO was pulled out from under the school system as such, and so each year, the, the PTOs or PTAs, any organization, it's going to be that parent organization, are going, they're going to operate more like the City Schools Foundation, although the City Schools Foundation is a 501(c)(3), but they are not under the control of, of the school district. And that really came about, I think, as a result of some difficulties with, with being able to, the fiscal responsibility and making sure that the fiscal responsibility and any liability came, was pulled away from school districts. Is that...
Yes, that came about because the, what it was, was allowing the school to approve any fundraising that the PTO was going to do, and to make sure that the money flowed back to the school based on what it was raised for. It put more controls, it separated the two from it, and once the PTO would give the money or the, raise the money to the school, then it became the property of the school. But it was done because of some issues that were created in some other places in the state where some money was not appropriated appropriately.
The only problem I have with that part of it is student participation. If the PTO is sponsoring a candy sale, then the students are participating, and they are the ones that are doing it, not the PTO. They're, but according to what we're saying here, then, those students are not under any kind of umbrella or whatever with our school policies for fundraising. See what I'm saying?
Students are still falling under our policies for fundraising. This is to track the money flow and who, and how they can go about raising money, that has to be approved by the school to do that. So students are still going to fall under us when they're raising money. And one of the big differences is is it an active or, or a passive fundraiser? And active fundraiser is when they're taking instruction time to put together the fundraiser, and passive is like if you go eat at XYZ restaurant, 10% of the revenue will be donated. So it, it does kind of give us the, the idea of what we're supposed to be doing as, for the principal, so they know what to expect from it. And the state stepped into this, and they, PTOs now have to fill out a lot of paperwork. They have to go through all kinds of hoops to get to where they can raise money. But to answer your question, really, the students and your policy is that they're not supposed to go out and encourage solicitations and things, and so it still falls under that for us.
Okay, I'm still a little bit confused. All right, the PTO is sponsoring a candy sale, okay, or magazines, or flour, whatever, and the students are going out and they're the ones that are selling it or getting the oil... And the students are going out and they're the ones that are selling it or getting the orders for it under the umbrella of the PTO. Now, the money then that comes from that goes to the PTO, and then hopefully they're putting that back into the school. But there are no stipulations on how that student can participate in that fundraising activity? Can they still go next door to Ms. Barton or to Ms. Goff and ask them to buy candy or whatever? I mean, I know they do it, but what I'm saying is, is that a violation of, of a policy that we have for school fundraisers?
I, I don't know. Linda, do you have the reference?
No, that's, I was, as a matter of fact, I was looking for that.
That's a different, that's a different policy.
There is-
Yeah, it's a different. You have, you do have a policy, I said, that I, that I know we have on, on school support organizations, which is 2.404. I can, what I can do is, looking at it just right now, let me, let me see what I can find on that, because-
Alright, then, can I make a motion that we do not consider this policy 6.701 tonight and do it at a later date?
It's on first reading, correct?
Right. That's a motion. Do I get a second to it?
I'll second that.
Alright. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Any opposition? And there is none. Alright.
Okay, and those are your policies.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. Revenue and expenditure, Mr. Anderson?
Uh, yes, we're at the 16.7% of the year or two months' worth of reporting. Revenue-wise, well, last year at this time, we were $1,669,000 in the hole. This year, we're $1,157,000 in the hole. And as you know, our cash flow doesn't really come in until the holiday season and property tax collection, so that's to be expected, but it hasn't improved somewhat. One of the interesting things on the revenue side is our, our sales tax, our local sales tax collections are up over $100,000 at this point of the year, the first two months, which is really, really good news for us. The state of Tennessee announced that there were many millions of dollars up in sales tax collections for the last month, so we're, we're glad to see that. We're at 8.5% in revenues. Last year at this time, we were 8.2%. On the expenditure side, we're at 9.8%. Last year at this time, we were 10% even. So we're right where we should be based on our track record of revenue and expenditures.
Okay. Any question on financial report, Ms. Settles?
I'd just like to ask questions on this because I like to see Gary think sometimes. The local option sales tax is what you mean when you're talking about sales?
On the, yes, sir.
On the revenue side?
Second one, line two. Right, correct.
And that's not, you, you had, we talked about this before. This does not include like licenses, like marriage license. That's not included in this?
That's under other local, other local revenues. That's line three and four include all the other local monies that come in from the county and the city.
Okay. Sales taxes strictly, retail sales or whatever?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Alright, do I have a motion then to approve the revenue and expenditure report?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Alright, other business?
I do have, there is a fundraising policy, and I was thinking that it was there, but I'd, I'd like to have time to take a look at it, but it is 6.702. So we do have a fun, a policy that is specifically fundraising. But, but I'll get with Ms. Taylor, and we'll check on this and get it back to you, I think.
Under other business, I'd like to make a recommendation to the board, if they will approve it as such, that we take, our first meeting of every month, we've been meeting twice here, but I would like to change that, and our first meeting of the month will be at the City Schools Central Office. Same time, same day, or same Tuesday, and that will be designated for policies and policies only, so that we can get through all these policies and get them out of our way. Is that acceptable to everyone? I've, I've talked with Dr. Gilbert about it and talked with our attorney about it, and seemed like we could move along with our policies.
What would be the advantage of doing it at Central Office as opposed to here?
Discussion?
Okay.
Ms. Settles?
When we're here at City Hall, both of the Tuesdays that we meet, it is broadcast, it's telecast. All of our meetings are open to the public. It will be publicized, it just wouldn't be televised.
Correct.
And I think having it that way, especially when we're dealing with board policies, probably opens it up a lot. I was gonna bring this up, I'm glad you did. I was thinking about the same thing. So I'm, I'm kind of in, well, I'm not kind of, I'm completely in favor of something like that.
Okay. Well, I will make that as, how many, sorry, Mr. Ballard?
I just have a question about the policies themselves. Seems like they're coming out of a fire hose at us right now. Are we-
That's right.
It's the time of year for them.
Are we about to turn the valve off on that and get to other business?
Well, you have some more water to go through, Mr. Ballard, I'm afraid to tell you. You've done tremendous work on the policies, and you know that, but, and, and we're trying not to overload you, but we do need to get through. You have, like, tonight, you finished up all, almost all of that first set of the BOs. There are only a couple left in there. The, we finished up almost all the financial. You finished up almost most personnel. We have the instruction to go through. We have quite a few of those. But, but you're nearing the finish line. You're a lot closer than you were last year.
Okay, because I, I know we talked about bundling, being able to, you know, just to, make it every two years.
That's right.
Instead of every year, especially for no changes.
That's right.
And just say if it's, if it's a rubber stamp, it's no change, and we're not recommending any. Just bundle those together and do them as a-
Once, once we go through this first time and get those numbers changed, if you remember last, the last meeting, you had, I guess, 10, 12, 15, 20, that were just to be reviewed, and that's what it would be. So that, that's the bundling, and we can do that.
Well, thank you. I know you'd like to shut off the fire hose as well.
Mr. Chairman, it-
Yes, Ms. LaRoche, you're recognized.
Are we setting a limit on these, on these first meetings at Central Office, or is, do we have a goal set as to when we're gonna move back into the televised council chamber? Or is this just indefinite? Because I, I, I think there's a lot of value in having, you know, our meetings publicized in this nice facility, and then there's so much better access for the community. I understand the need to get, to get some of these policies out, out of the way, and it's not the most exciting part of the, the board meeting. I guess I'm just worried about setting a new standard and getting us out of the really nice facility for our community to watch the, the happenings of this board. And so I would ask that if we vote on your proposal, that we revisit it or set in there a timeline, or maybe an opportunity to vote on it again in the future, once all of the policies are out of the way.
Okay. Well, you can either vote in favor of the recommendation, or you know, whatever, whatever it's the will of the board, it's fine with me. I'm just making the suggestion.
I think David raises a good point, just about transparency and, and appearance. People could come to the board office to listen to people talk about, but it's very easy if they're televised to tune in, and just makes things accessible to people, and it doesn't seem like things are going on behind closed doors, even if it is open. Sort of appearance of transparency.
Ms. Settles?
I'm gonna bring up the point again. The only requirement statewide is that public notice is given and ample notice. Central Office, everybody knows where it is, people that are concerned about it, so anything that goes on. And generally, my experience has been, when we're at Central Office, we almost always have somebody from the Daily News Journal there. Almost always, probably for the reasons that you mentioned. It's, nothing will be clandestine. And then you have one meeting at Central Office and one meeting here, so we're not completely abandoning the televised portion. But it's a little easier as far as the work part of it, because despite what everybody thinks, I do not like to wear a bow tie all the time. But when you're on television, you know, we feel like we gotta dress up a little bit more, maybe be able to wear blue jeans and a, not a ratty t-shirt, but maybe a t-shirt. And so we can get a lot of that, and that's my, my kind of-
Well, it also gives the staff an opportunity to have more, better access to legal documents, like, you know, Ms. Taylor could have access to more of the Tennessee Code annotated books and things along that line if, if needed, so. But it's, it's a suggestion, and if the board wants to stay here, then that's, that's fine.
Well, could we amend the suggestion, maybe, and, and say that we would do it for X amount of months, and that we would revisit it again in, in X amount of months?
That's fine. We can, we can, we can go there and change it at any time. We're not locked in to any. Our board policy does not give a place that we will meet. It just says we will meet the second and the fourth Tuesday of every month, so.
Right.
I would add that I, I kinda support the, the option of having the meetings at the Central Office. I think we have manuals, I know at home, when I'm going through these policies, I have manuals that I am looking at, and it gives us the opportunity to spread them out and actually research them and look at them. And I would welcome any of the public to come, of course, to the Central Office when we do the, the meetings and hash out these policies. So I, I would be open to it and leave it up to the board.
Okay. Any other discussion? Alright, the motion has been made, and secondly, call the roll, please, ma'am.
Mr. Ballard?
I'm sorry, can we clarify what the, because we had a couple of possible suggestions. Could we clarify what we're voting on?
Well, the, my motion was that we have our first meeting of every month at the Murkborough City School Board Central Office, and that meeting would be designated for policies and policies only. And we wouldn't have personnel or revenue or anything else. We're gonna do strictly policies.
And that could be revisited anytime, you're saying? That's not gonna be something we're gonna say that's what we're doing from now on?
That's exactly right.
And I think that it, you know, the, voting on the timeline would depend on how many policies we have that we've got to go over and how in-depth. Some policies require more time than others to discuss, and, and so I, maybe what your suggestion was a timeline, because I think that we need to give enough time to be able to work these policies out, so.
That brings up another point. I'm sorry to, to go further. It brings up another point, which is, the location of our meeting is not set in policy, right?
Correct.
If it's not set in policy, who then determines where we meet? I don't even know that it's a board decision to say that we're gonna meet here or we're gonna meet there. I don't know how we got to where we are now. Before I got on the board, when I got on the board, this is where we always met. We met at Central Office. If there was budget stuff, we, workshops or retreat. So we did work, work group there, basically, and then we came here and did the major, or did the other things. So my question would be, even the necessity for a motion on where to meet, if it is not in policy or if it's not in a directive or anything like that. And I, I don't know if that's anywhere that says who decides where we're gonna meet.
Well, we do have a policy that says that we'll meet here, at least, do we not?
No.
Not anymore? We took that out?
No, we, you approved a policy tonight that, that changed where we would meet.
Okay.
And it only says that we would meet on the second and the fourth Tuesday. It does not state where. That was one of the policies that you approved tonight.
And I don't think where is the question. It, that's not the question at all. It's how accessible we are here as opposed to how accessible we are at Central Office. I mean, let's face it, more people are gonna watch it on television than they're gonna do, than they're gonna come to Central Office. And I, I think it's, if I'm not mistaken, we started doing it this way for this very reason, so that it would be, people would be able to see what decisions were made. And I don't, I don't, I'm not opposed to doing it for a while with the policies. I just don't wanna get into the habit of making it permanent, where it stays that way.
And that's why I had, I'm sorry.
It is a decision of the board to determine where we meet. You know, seven people determine that.
Okay.
So, you know, if you wanna continue to meet here, then that's fine. We'll vote. If we, but we do not vote in favor of the motion in the second, then we will be right back here every time, but fine.
Okay.
Well, I would like to input that I, I think reasonable to at least attempt, under the temporary timeframe, we can revisit it any time. But if we go two or three months and we not, and we, I like the idea of focusing on policy and just knocking those out, and then have the, the second meeting to cover other details. But anyway, just give it a go, you know. Nothing's wrong with change.
Call the roll, please, ma'am.
Mr. Ballard?
Is this an aye or a nay? Oh, okay, aye.
Ms. Barton?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Goff?
Aye.
Mr. LaRoche?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Settles?
Aye and yes.
Alright, so just remember, next month, the second Tuesday, we'll be at Central Office same time. Alright, anything else coming for the board?
Only a question, and this will be to the communications. I'm sorry, if I can. How does notice get out? How do we give notice of meeting?
That's actually Lisa does, the other Lisa does.
The other Lisa? I got the wrong Lisa again?
No, it's okay. It's from Murkborough, and we also put it on our website, so that is-
It is publicized.
Do we not send that to the News Journal?
Lisa, could we put that on Peachjar too? Can we send that on Peachjar and post it on the website?
It's on all of the websites.
Okay, alright, good.
All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
All in opposition, good night. Good night.